Okay, you're up.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we are on indigenous land, the traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish people who have lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase Native communities. We commit to identifying racist practices and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. So again, good afternoon. Welcome to today's meeting of the Seattle Planning Commission. All of our meetings are open to the public. However, as an advisory body, the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings. We provide recommendations to elected officials who in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to the appropriate elected officials. This meeting is a hybrid meeting with some members participating remotely. Me, Lauren, here in person in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. I would like to begin by looking at our color brave space norms. We'd like to invite a fellow commissioner to choose and briefly speak to one of those norms that may have particular relevance to today's agenda. I did not reach out to anybody in advance. I would appreciate a volunteer, but I'll happily call on someone if no one volunteers. Thank you, Lauren.
I think practicing examining racially biased systems, what the tagline says is that systems are what are left after all people in this room leave, which I think, looking at our future land use map, looking at our 30-year plan for growth in Seattle, is a great example of a racially biased system. And so I think we use that lens to review both the DEIS and the draft comp plan together in our letter today.
Thank you, Lauren. I really appreciate that. If there are no amendments or modifications to the norms, see any, I suggest we will re-agree to them. On the agenda today, we have two items related to the commission's review and comment on the Draft One Seattle Comprehensive Plan. First, Planning Commission staff will present a draft, their draft of the commission's comment letter on the comprehensive plan. And then we will walk through a staff draft of the Comprehensive Plan Draft Environmental Impact Statement Comment Letter. First order of business, though, is to approve minutes from the March 28 meeting. I'd ask for a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Rick moves. Thank you.
One second.
Thanks, Julio. You have a motion in a second. Does anyone have any changes or amendments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It's like a chorus.
Any opposed? Extinctions? Chair votes aye. Thanks. So as far as upcoming meetings, the next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is on Thursday, April 18th, from 7:30 to 9:00. This meeting will be held online using the MS Teams platform. Our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 25th, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. That, like this meeting, will be a hybrid format with options for meeting in person here in the Boards and Commissions Room at Seattle City Hall or online using the MS Teams platform. I'd like to turn it over to Vanessa for her announcements and business.
Thank you, David. Just to reiterate that we are in a hybrid format meeting for those members of the public listening in. Also, we'd like to, we have a number of commissioners joining the call via MS Teams, and Lauren Squires and David Goldberg, along with city staff, planning commission staff, here in the Boards and Commissions Room of City Hall. We'd like to remind commissioners to use the chat function of MS Teams only to be recognized to speak by the chair as members of the public listening in don't have access to the chat. So please don't put substantive comment in there. I will do my best to assist David in creating a queue and calling on people in order. And I will remember to turn to my right to see if Lauren has her hand up or if David has his hand up. I will read two public comments that I receive via email. But before doing that, I'm going to ask David to start the introductions. And as part of introductions, please indicate your day job. And if desired, any disclosure regarding your forthcoming comments during this meeting, whether or not they represent your employer or solely your own opinion. And I will help keep track of who's gone and who hasn't because I know you can't all see each other. There are only a certain number of faces that fit on the screen. Go ahead, David.
David Goldberg, I'm the co-chair of the commission. He/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village and work for the Washington State Department of Transportation as key liaison and ombudsman. And I don't have anything to disclose. But I would like to pass it to my co-chair, Caleb.
Michaela Dufferin, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work for King County Department of Community and Human Services. And in my day job, we are reviewing and drafting comments on jurisdictions' comprehensive plans. I've fully refused myself from review of Seattle's plan in that capacity, so I can fully participate here. And nothing I say today is on behalf of my employer. They fully represent my personal opinions. Thank you. I will pass it to Rick.
Thanks, Michaela. I'm Rick Moller. I use he/him pronouns. I live just north of the Wallingford Urban Village. And for my day job, I'm professor and chair of the Department of Architecture at the University of Washington. And I will pass it to Caleb.
Good afternoon. My name is Caleb Toolday. He/him pronouns. I live in the Central District and I work at Rehner Scholars as the Associate Director of Leadership Development. I will pass it off to Rose.
Hi, thanks. I am Rose Lucello. Let's end pronouns they/them. In my day job, I'm a wetland biologist and training specialist with Jacobs Engineering. And everything I say today is my own view and not that of my employer. Yes. And I will pass to, yeah, I don't think I missed anything. I live up north, if we're still sharing that stuff. Jamie.
Hi, everyone. Jamie Struble. I use she/her pronouns. And I live in the future 130th Station area. At my day job, I am the Director of Climate Action and Resilience for the Nature Conservancy of Washington. And I, outside of my day job, I was a part of supporting one of the community-based organizations that was funded to provide input on the comp plan update. And did Zio go?
Steve's not here. How about Lauren?
Lauren.
Hi. Hey, everyone. Lauren Squires, she/her. I live by the Mount Baker Light Rail Station in South Seattle. And I recently changed jobs. I work at King County Metro now and I lead their connecting to transit program. And my comments today do not represent King County Metro. Julio.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julio Sanchez. My pronouns are he/him. One in Seattle. I reside in the Capitol Hill neighborhood. And my most recent employment is as a contractor with Washington State Department of Health evaluating community grant proposals. And shortly with the Washington State Department of Energy doing similar work. I do not believe I have any conflict of interest. And any opinion I provide is as an individual, not as a representative of any of my present or past employers.
Thank you, Julio. How about Andy?
Hi, Andy Dallenberg. He/him. Live in northeast Seattle. And I teach at the University of Washington in both public health and urban planning. And I don't know that I could represent the university if I wanted to. I don't know who's next.
How about Nick?
Hello, I'm Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle, in the North Dell Ridge neighborhood. And for my day job, I work in the Development Services Department at the City of Bellevue as the Code and Policy Director. Deanna?
Good afternoon. I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. For my day job, I'm a multimodal transportation planner. I work at WSP USA. Views are my own. And I'll pass it over to whoever is left.
Thanks, Deanna. Jamie, do you want to just add anything to your introduction?
Oh, yeah. Just that, like everyone else said, views are my own and not representative of future or past employers.
Thank you. Olivia?
Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm staff to the planning commission. John?
Hi, everybody. I'm John Hoy. Staff to the planning commission. I use he/him pronouns. Robin?
Robin McGonigal. I use she/her, they/them pronouns. I am staff to the commission and I live on Bashan Island.
Thanks, everyone. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I'm the Executive Director of the commission. I use she/her pronouns. And I thank you all for your participation today. I'm going to let David go ahead and read a little preamble in advance of the two public comments that I'm about to read.
Thanks, Vanessa. Yeah, the commission provides time for public comment at all our meetings, but are reminded that we don't hold public hearings and we are an advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. Individuals who make comments to the commission should remember that the mayor and city council make the decision. And we encourage you to make your comments to those. Now I invite anyone who's here to comment, who'd like to comment. No one here, but we do have some that have been previously submitted.
Thank you, David. I'll read the first comment. I listened to the planning commission's discussion of the climate and environment element on Thursday, and I was disappointed at the way earthquakes are addressed in the comprehensive plan. I propose that the commission recommend a separate earthquake preparedness and response element to gather together the scattered policies on this topic. We know much of the focus has been on climate change and steps needed to mitigate those impacts, which is essential. However, it is also important to focus on earthquakes as they are the highest possible hazard to Seattle as indicated in the Office of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Document, which states earthquakes are the most serious hazard facing Seattle. Unlike other potentially catastrophic hazards, Seattle has had and will experience powerful earthquakes. We currently have few policies that help build both infrastructure and community-based resilience into the comprehensive plan. If we plan and mitigate for the highest level and most impactful risk of earthquakes, then the policies will also be responsive to any of the other risks on the list. We must have policies supporting strong and resilient buildings and communities. I urge you to create an earthquake preparedness and response element for the comprehensive plan. Margaret Sanders. I'll read the second comment. Subject is comment on One Seattle Plan, Seattle Comprehensive Plan Update Planning Commission Recommendations. Dear Commissioners, as you formulate your letter of recommendations to the city council for the One Seattle Plan, I would like to encourage you to consider the input you are receiving regarding a stronger stance on policy recommendations for disaster mitigation work, specifically for earthquakes. I know that climate resilience has been a theme for mitigation planning for several years now, but we as the city continue to ignore the more devastating consequences of an earthquake in our policy setting. I've been doing work in the disaster preparedness field since 2009, and we as a city are so underprepared. I just attended the Regional Disaster Preparedness Conference in Tacoma, Partners in Emergency Preparedness. And there is no question in anyone's mind that the occurrence of an earthquake is not a question of if, but when. Christopher Godley, Director of Emergency Management at Stanford University, spoke of how we have sometimes viewed potential disasters as black swans, something we could never have predicted is happening. But the larger concern is about what he called the gray rhinos, those events that are off in the horizon and very dangerous. But while they are predictable, gray rhinos do exist, governments would much rather ignore them because, you know, they are way off in the distance. The earthquake several days ago in Taiwan showed what good mitigation policy can produce, minimal structural damage, resilient infrastructure, very few deaths. If an earthquake could hit Seattle today, would hit Seattle today, the results would be the opposite in the extreme. I won't cite the city's own Seattle Hazard Identification and Vulnerability Assessment to you. I know one of my colleagues has submitted that information already. But I will point out that if you look at that assessment, Appendix of Major Land Use and Population Concentration and the overlap with lift qualification zones, you can also predict the impacts. I strongly encourage you to recommend a policy action around earthquake preparedness and mitigation. A specific section should be created in the One Seattle Plan for earthquakes so that hazard can be overlaid with stronger policies than those being created for climate resilience. Those hazards are different. And while there is some overlap in resilience policy-type statements, they will play out in very different ways. We need to address our known highest hazard in a way that drives action by city departments by setting policies that will focus attention and funding to protect those who live, work, and visit in Seattle. Thank you for your consideration. Cindy Barker, West Seattle resident and volunteer with the Seattle Emergency Communication Hubs. That concludes our public comment.
Thanks, Vanessa. We'll move to our first agenda item. And planning staff will present a staff draft of the commission's comment letter and the draft on Seattle Plan. We will then have an opportunity for comments and discussion. We have an hour and 10 minutes for this agenda item. Vanessa?
Thank you very much, David. Next slide, please. So we're going to take five minutes, or we're going to give you all five minutes just to review the staff draft letter on the comprehensive plan. Should be in your inbox. We can put it there again. And I'm going to start the timer right now. It is 3:21. Following our five minutes of review, we are then going to break down. We're going to spend 10 minutes on seven different sections. So we're actually going to go a little bit over the hour and 10 minutes that David indicated. We are going, staff will present very brief comments on each of these sections. And then the remaining 10 minutes will be spent entertaining comments and suggestions by planning commissioners. We are aiming to approve our letter on this as well as the draft DEIS at our next full commission meeting, which is two weeks from today. And I would like to suggest you all focus your comments and suggestions on specific content of the draft letter and let the word sniffing and the edits and identification of typos, let us handle that next week. Today, we really want to identify any more specifics to the recommendations that you all have and putting specifics around any new ideas that you may want to surface at this meeting. And with that, it's now 3:22 and we'll start the five-minute review time. Hopefully, that five minutes gave you a chance to refresh your memory on the various points in the letter. Next slide, please. So I just want to say that we have a pretty ambitious agenda in front of us. And I am going to really do my best to keep us on time so that we don't run out of time for items that might be at the end. And would like to reiterate, to really please focus on the content of the letter. And then we'll spend next week finessing the language and the layout. This letter was turned around pretty quickly and was written by three different people, all of whom sit here in the room, Olivia, John, and myself. So there has not been the opportunity to go through for an edit of consistency of tone of language of approach. We will do that. But today, we really want to focus on the content. So on pages one and two of the letter, we, as an introduction, we reference our 2022 issue briefs, provide hyperlinks to those. And then notes and key questions or review lenses through which you all approached review of the plan. How is racial and social equity promoted throughout? How are anti-displacement strategies actionable? How is climate resilience prioritized? How is equitable housing access and choice ensured throughout the city? And how is a sustainable quality of life insured for all residents? We then talk briefly about overarching comments that are applicable throughout the whole plan. And those are recommendations and acknowledgements regarding racial equity, displacement, and the need for measurable metrics throughout the plan so as to be able to judge and evaluate down the road if the admirable goals in the draft plan are actually being met through the priorities that are listed. So we've got about eight minutes. Please put your name in the chat or raise your hand if you have comments regarding this section of the draft letter. Again, this is page one and two. I do have 10 minutes set at the end of this portion of the agenda, that being talking about the draft letter on the draft plan. And so if you need time for all this to sink in, we can tack on time if we don't use the full 10 minutes for this section at the end where we have general comments. So I'm going to give it about another minute. Michaela has a question. Sorry, David.
Michaela, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Sorry, let me turn my camera on. This is hopefully just a minor question. I'm not familiar with the term exclusionary displacement in the displacement section. It lists four different types of displacement, including exclusionary displacement. What is that?
Yeah, I could probably add the word exclusionary zoning there, but they are specifically referring to exclusionary zoning in neighborhoods that prevents people from having moved or moved in there in the first place. Makes sense.
Okay. Maybe rewrite it so like exclusion is a different thing than displacement. Okay, thanks.
Deanna?
Thanks, Vanessa. Just a quick question again, just to clarify. Right now, we're providing substantive kind of comments to what's reflected in the content, correct?
Correct. And if anything is missing.
Right, okay. I think that, you know, I love how we're centering the metrics and the measurements as one of our overarching comments. What I think would be helpful if the entire body of this commission agrees is that the message we're trying to convey is that the metrics at the level of a comprehensive plan should be understood as key performance indicators for each element, right? So it's like, what are the most important overarching metrics that are the foundation of all policies? And if those are met towards, you know, meeting certain thresholds, the city is going to be in a good place. And I think it otherwise feels like we're just asking to measure a lot of things and not necessarily focus on the key performance indicators per element, right? That then sub-plans can incorporate with agencies focusing on the nuance of any other array of metrics that would be necessary. So differentiating that the role of the kinds of metrics in the plan are key performance indicators with the responsibility then of agencies taking those on, reflecting them in their sub-plans, and expanding on them to measure progress in, you know, a more comprehensive way. So that's something I just wanted to see if fellow commissioners would agree that that's more the tone and intent of, you know, the accountability we want to create and like the guidance of the compass of these metrics guiding growth. So that, I have many more comments, but I'll stop there to see if folks agree. And allow for others to speak. And allow for others to speak.
Jamie, yes, and then Jamie, and then we...
Well, this is kind of a tag on to the transportation section, Deanna, but I appreciate talking about metrics at the top, and I agree that it's the right tone. My question kind of to the commission is, do a lot of the functional plans that Seattle has recently published, including the Seattle Transportation Plan, elevate metrics, elevate our goals? And I know that those functional plans are kind of sub to our comprehensive plan. And so I wonder if it's appropriate to reference the plans in our already adopted guiding documents around kind of topic-specific transportation, housing, if you will, anti-displacement. We have those numbers, and I think we're just expressing our concern that those numbers aren't represented as our guiding targets. My question is, is that appropriate to say, can we elevate the planning work that has been done in these, you know, element-specific areas into the comprehensive plan? You know, eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries. Can that be a target that's in our comprehensive plan, for example?
That's definitely language that staff can incorporate into the next version of the draft that you all see, and just want to encourage your participation in next week's committee meetings, if and when you're available to, and if not, just to take a look at what we will probably come out with, at least one revised draft next week, where we'll try to address and incorporate comments that are brought up today. I think we have time for one more, and I think Jamie's in the queue.
If folks are responding to Deanna, they can go ahead because I have a different topic.
Go for it.
And you, Rick?
I have a different topic, too.
Within this section, first two pages?
Yeah, so let's hear from Jamie and then Rick, and we may not be able to have much of a discussion before we move on to the next. And I'm hoping with that time that I left at the end.
I can sit tight. I'm further ahead.
Thank you. Jamie, thank you.
I just wanted to respond to our displacement section. And like, how to word this? I think that this is, I think that it's not enough. Like, the anti-displacement framework is not enough. And I think that the way that we have framed this is like, is like, this is so great. We're so pleased to see this. And then we look forward to hear more about how you're going to work on this. And that's kind of the tone of that paragraph to me. And I have some questions around this, too, because the anti-displacement framework was released as like a separate accompanying document. So my understanding is it doesn't quite have the teeth of, like, being an element in the comp plan. Is that a correct assumption?
My understanding is that the anti-displacement framework, there is a crosswalk as an appendix to that framework that shows where anti-displacement policies show up throughout the plan.
Yes, yes. But I think, like, yeah, I think like when reading the framework itself, a lot of this is like just culling together. I'm looking at the framework, not the crosswalk, but the, like, a lot of it is a culling together of everything that we are already doing. And what I'd like to see is more of the proactive, what are we doing differently? Because we, like, a lot of that is great work, right? But we're still experiencing, a lot of folks are still experiencing displacement. And if we do not work to accommodate enough growth in the city, we're just going to continue to exacerbate that with. And so I feel like this component of like, how is this going to work together? You know, there was that comment earlier about the earthquake stuff being sprinkled everywhere. I feel like the anti-displacement stuff is sprinkled everywhere. And so there's this question of like, how is this truly going to function beyond this? And so so I guess I would just want to be like, yes, thank you for all the work you did on this. Appreciate that there's different types of displacement. And like, we want to, we want to see how this is going to work in the future, how it's going to pair with the comp plan, what kind of metrics are we going to put to it? And in addition to how are we ensuring that those who contributed or community organizations that are part of this informing this framework and the anti-displacement policies, what is the accountability back to those communities, too?
Thanks, Jamie. We can take a run at strengthening the language while keeping the acknowledgement of good work and the need to do better. So with that, I'm going to suggest we move on to growth strategy, because we're already behind.
All right, that one is me, some fiercely scribbling notes. The growth strategy section has a handful of sort of higher-level recommendations, a lot of them backed up by some additional details and some recommendations. Starts on page three, I believe. Sorry, page two. Sorry, I'm page two. It has a recommendation to broadly plan for additional growth, which is talking about the growth target that the plan is based around, has a recommendation to go further to expand access to more housing types in more areas of the city. I'd especially like some feedback from you all on the specific recommendations in that section. Are those the right ones? We've had lots of various conversations around this. There's a recommendation to make urban neighborhood zones more effective, with some details on how that might happen. Recommendation to connect the growth strategy, housing, and transportation through one vision, and then that links to the transportation section, which goes into more detail on that. And then finally, perhaps the most specific one, add neighborhood center around the 140th street station area. So with that, let's have comments and discussion on this section. You've got to look through. Sorry, I don't have the chat open. So Michaela is first with many comments. Go ahead, Michaela.
Yeah, I appreciate you trying to take a pass. I've tried to figure out what housing components go in the growth strategy versus the housing element. And I was sort of struggling with that as well as I was reading. One of the things that I sort of find that the plan falls short on is that I don't feel like the growth strategy that the city has selected is adequately responding to new state and county by planning policy requirements, that the city began to repair harms to communities that were previously impacted by past discriminatory and exclusionary housing and land use practices, and also who are currently being impacted by those as well, the legacy of those. And in staring at the maps and really thinking long and hard about this, I just feel like the plan is an incremental approach to sort of moderately sort of changing our land use patterns that the city staff in the housing appendix acknowledge is blatantly exclusionary and really locks low-income people out of high-opportunity areas of the city. And, you know, the city staff in the appendix identify, at a very brief level, certain harms done to different populations over time, but they use language that distances their responsibility to indigenous populations and the specific impacts. They provide like, in passing, statements about kind of anti-Chinese actions, anti-Japanese actions through internment. And I see a lot of evaluation of, in some of the data, on some of those populations. But I'm having a hard time believing that the city has put forward a meaningful response to disparities that we still see in housing and homelessness today. You know, indigenous populations are about one and a half percent of the total population of Seattle, and yet they represent about 11% of our homeless population. And I'm just feeling emotions around this that I think are going to suggest when we get to the housing section, some changes. But I don't know where to put sort of a new comment or recommendation around this plan sort of falls short in that agreement that we've all made as a state to begin to repair harms. And I'm curious if fellow commissioners would be okay with that. Seeing a head nod from Deanna, head nod from Nick. Vanessa's typing something. Okay. Well, we can look at something next week, get folks to react to it, maybe?
Sure.
For clarification, Michaela, you're looking for in the growth, in the growth strategy section, an explicit statement that elsewhere in the plan, we have found these discriminatory harms, and the growth strategy is not really addressing, not going far enough to address. Is that what you're...
Yes. I think what you're calling out...
Later, we've got more to say about that.
But is the focus mainly on indigenous populations?
No, no, it's...
What I hear you saying, Michaela, is that the state is leading and Seattle is not. And we're not, we're not upholding that agreement.
Other cities in County Ross are leading on this, too. I'm reviewing plans right now on my day job, and everyone's grappling with this. This is really hard. No one's ever had to document the history, nor have they had to find a through line between what happened in the past, what was the change over time, and what are we seeing today in those populations? Therefore, what are we going to do about it? And the city basically says we're going to work on anti-displacement. Like, they have three strategies, but I think the fact that we're locking low-income people, continuing to prevent low-income people from being able to live in all parts of the city, is problematic. And when you look at who's disproportionately low-income in Seattle, it's people of color. And the middle housing strategies are falling short of our expectations, and none of that middle housing is going to be affordable to low-income renters, who are, where we're, how we're going to meet the need for those households. And so it's sort of a housing-specific comment. It's sort of a growth strategy comment, and it's less about a specific population. It's just more of me feeling like the city was careful around their words around that. They were careful to take too much, sort of like, to be very explicit about past harms, and therefore continuing to be not very explicit and actionable and responsible for doing what they have within their control to begin to repair those harms. Okay. I'll leave it at that for now. I have other comments, but I don't think today's discussion's going to allow time for a full surfacing of all of them.
Any other comments on the growth strategy section?
I just want to respond to what Michaela said. I hear a linkage between Jamie's comments and Michaela's comments. I think our main question is, how are we actually meaningfully addressing the harms and the goals that we're working toward together? And what you said, Kayla, Michaela, if we continue to limit where low-income people can live in all parts of the city, like, we're only continuing to perpetuate harm, and to me, that's related to displacement. And I think that we can model the type of very, like, database wording, but in you, you just said it in your comments of like, these are the linkages that we need to start to make. And I think that can be a real powerful part of our comments.
Nick?
Apologies if this is falling into the wordsmithing category, but when we're talking about the neighborhood centers and go further to expand access to more housing types, I think the comment in the letter is add back more of the originally studied neighborhood centers, which I think we all agreed, you know, what was provided in the EIS was a more kind of comprehensive approach to neighborhood centers that we'd like to see. But I think we could strengthen that by instead tying it more to like maximizing the transit investments and put these neighborhood centers near the frequent transit network and put a greater emphasis on that housing opportunity tying to transit, but also trying to tie it to existing kind of business areas, too. So it's a little bit more than just add back what was originally there. It's kind of strengthening to why do we want to see all of those neighborhood centers in the plan? So apologies, though, if I get into wordsmithing, but that's just the comment there.
No, that's good. Thank you. I'm going to suggest we move to...
Okay, I'm taking on land use, and I apologize that my headings in the section of this letter do not embody the recommendations, but just briefly, I'll just say that the first section is on overarching goals and policies that we would like to address in the land use section. The off-street parking section, we do make a recommendation that we want to recognize the parking minimums are a barrier to the production of housing. In the neighborhood centers section, we actually, the language does get to what was just commented on, that we would like to see new neighborhood centers built off of the frequent transit network, rather than only in existing business districts. The neighborhood residential zones is the next section, and recommending stronger policy language and commitments to allowing middle housing in existing neighborhood residential zones. The next section is on, the last section, this is all on page five and six of the draft, staff draft letter. The last section there at the bottom of the screen is on what is being called living and work balance, that there does not seem to provide adequate recognition of the changing dynamic between living, residents' living spaces, and where they are working with that shifting nature of commuting, et cetera. So I'll just leave it at that. And I do, this section does also recognize that there is quite a significant overlap between the growth strategy and the land use sections, the elements. So it's a little tricky to know what to put where. Rick?
Yeah, thanks. First, thank you, staff, for pulling this together. I was hoping we could be a little more specific in the section on neighborhood residential zones. The city is using the criteria to determine whether or not six units would be permitted in neighborhood residential zones is either with its, within access to frequent transit or affordable units are provided. My understanding, based upon Michael Hupner's answer to my question several weeks ago, is that the city is using the state's standards in HB 1110 to determine the definition of frequent transit access. I would suggest that we use the city's existing frequent transit map, which is already being used for such purposes, which would allow the inclusion of six units per lot in a much broader area of the city in neighborhood residential zones.
Good comment, Rick.
Anyone have difficulty with that?
Anyone have difficulty with that?
Ever most of the city.
Michaela has a thought?
So can you say it one more time? Is it the, just the frequent transit stops, Rick, and current, existing frequent transit? Is that the-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the city, the city, we have an existing frequent transit map, which is primarily, I'm not sure all that it's used for, but I do know that it's used to determine whether or not parking is required in a development.
Okay.
But, so it's, it's used for a different purpose, but the basic concept is the same. It is a map that we use to determine where frequent transit access exists. The, the criteria in HB 1110 is a much, much, much lower threshold.
Okay.
And so it would, it would result in the allowance of six units per lot in a much smaller area of the city. And I think the criteria that the state is using is far less relevant than the frequent transit map that we've already established for the city and has been in use for a number of years now.
And does that map get regularly updated with service changes from Metro when they change bus lines?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
It's probably based on our, like, it's based on current, but we have a very solidified long-range transit network, as well as the current frequent transit network. That's exactly what you're using.
Yeah, and I, I think it's also important to note that as we continue to open more light rail stations, we are reconfiguring existing bus service to serve those stations and intensifying our access to frequent transit citywide.
And I, I think this may be not a point to collect, but I think where I was going is should we be thinking about future, you know, existing-
Sure. Existing at, yes, existing and future, absolutely.
I know that's problematic because budgets and, you know, COVID happened, and everything we thought was going to happen with bus service changed overnight pretty dramatically. And then we're making long-term substantive density decisions based off of this planned transit. But I might, I might just ask Lauren next week if there's any, if you want to, if you're aware of anything that Metro is producing around this.
Yeah, we can talk about it next week.
Okay, thanks.
Good.
I like it.
Let's let Nick get in on this.
Oh, yeah, just pile on to Rick, because I, I 100% support this. And I think that what we heard was that the city of Seattle is just looking to allow six plexes where they have BRT. And so having with the frequent transit network, I, I support that. It's also the comment that we're raising around neighborhood centers, which I would hope would allow for more than six units, but I think it's worth, a comment worth repeating in neighborhood residential as well. So if we can't get neighborhood centers tied to all of the frequent transit stops at a minimum, I think we should expect, or really implore the city to require or allow six units at those stops. So, yeah, worth repeating the comment for neighborhood centers, as well as neighborhood residential zones, in my
How's our time on this section?
About three minutes.
Three more minutes. Anybody else want to? There's not anybody needed. I'll just interject an observation that I, I don't, I don't know, based on a lot of our conversation about the desire for denser, more walkable neighborhoods throughout the city, I don't know that we necessarily need to hang it on frequent transit being the only reason why you would have a, a more, a denser, more walkable neighborhood, especially at density like six units. That's not terribly high. And I don't think you necessarily need to have frequent transit to serve those, those kinds of environments. And I suspect, though, that we will have, as Rick indicated, you know, if you look at the frequent transit map, it covers an awful lot of the city. So either, either way you look at it. But I don't think we need to say that, oh, oops, if Metro doesn't have the budget for frequent transit in particular area, somewhere down the line, then we change the zoning to make it less intensive. I just don't think that's what we're, I don't think that's what we're trying to shoot for.
Okay.
Can, Deanna has a comment? I think maybe, and we can discuss this next week, but what I'm hearing in Rick's recommendation, which I actually really like, is that it is a tool in the toolbox, right, to arrive at the goal that we have for a polycentric city and providing clear policy guidance to developers and, you know, growth, guiding growth, that that can happen in a more ample space of the city that is supported by what the typical concerns of communities are, which is, you know, if you increase density, and then we're going to have, you know, traffic and parking demand, and, you know, we're not providing options and choice, you know, it, it addresses the most critical, I think, concern that there is around upzoning. And so by saying that we actually have the coverage that will provide the kind of frequent transit service that alleviates or provides that choice, right, ergo, we can just have a larger footprint where than the access to opportunity and the availability for additional housing units are needed across the city, you know, is possible, if I'm understanding Rick's intent correctly. Which is why I liked it. It's a tool. It's not that it's the only focus, but it's one way in which that can be manifested and clearly articulated in policy.
Thanks, Deanna. Let's segue on to-
The next section.
The next section.
Okay. The transportation section is on page, pages six, seven, and the top of eight. And again, sorry, some of these headings don't reflect the, the full nature of the recommendation, but the first one is oriented on prioritizing the transportation network. And there are several different place types listed in, in, in the draft that those, that transportation network should be prioritized according to. The second bullet is on establishing visionary goals, and that includes measurable targets. And we have several examples of measurable targets listed in the draft, even pointing to specific goals in the transportation element. The third bullet is on elevating, elevating safety, and that is elevating safety up to the top of the element. Right now, it's kind of further down as, as transportation goal six, and placing more emphasis on the high-crash network and improving the safety of multi-lane arteries. The next recommendation is on complete streets, recognizing that it is a city ordinance and creating a, recommending, creating a greater focus on the complete streets concept that includes more than just neighborhood streets. The next section is, next recommendation is on parking demand management, that recommends that adequate, recommends adequately addressing on-street parking and parking demand strategies. The next is on transportation demand management, recommending innovative transportation demand management tools, such as road use charging and providing incentives. The next section is on changing commute patterns, elevating the importance of goals related to both jobs and commuting. And then the last is on green infrastructure, recommending policies on green infrastructure that could be implemented, along with similar, similar policies in other elements.
All right, we've got about eight minutes for this.
Lauren?
Sweet. Thanks, John, for the overview. The, the first recommendation, I know that we'll probably work on the titles a little bit more to just kind of summarize the, the recommendation. And I just wanted to, to make a recommendation for how we could do that for the first one of the, kind of the transportation network. I would like to start referring to it as our transportation system and kind of talking about how our transportation system supports our growth strategy and our, and our broader goals overall. That first recommendation is really about how we translate, like, how this element advances the bigger vision. And so something like allocate street space to reinforce our land use vision, or advance a transportation system vision that advances our goals. Because we're right on that this, that there is no future, it's not clear what the future vision of the transportation system is in Seattle. And we are suggesting that the way we allocate space and the way we make decisions, we need more guidance. And the, the focus of that is this polycentric, walkable, 15-minute city that we're talking about, where you can make short trips in your neighborhood, you have a variety of sustainable choices to do so, that your first, best, most convenient and affordable option to travel between destinations is the, is the transit network, and that goods and services can move reliably and safely between manufacturing industrial centers and, and regional assets like I-5. So that kind of, that title of like, how, like, how is this, how is, how we're managing and establishing and creating a vision for our transportation system, reinforcing our broader goals, we can work on a title together, together for that. And that kind of relates to the visionary goals and the targets. And this was the thing that Deanna brought up at the top around, like, we have very strong targets established in our functional plans around eliminating traffic deaths and injuries, reducing single occupancy vehicle trips, reducing transportation-related emissions. And I am stunned that those are not showing up in the comprehensive plan. And so this is our place to say, we need to center those. Elevating safety is a great example of that. You know, a major tenet of how we are investing, where we are investing needs to be where the most people are dying and getting hurt. And sadly, if that, if that's going to happen when we're expanding our light rail system, our frequent transit network through the city, like, that's not a part of the vision, let's just say, for the future. And then you might have some comments on this, David, but the complete streets, I really appreciate the underscoring of complete streets, that we need to create a transportation system that works for everyone using our streets. But also, I'd like to work with staff to integrate a little bit of a nuance into that section around, like, we have limited space, and that's why we need kind of the decision guidance that reinforces our land use vision, kind of the comment at the top. But we have limited space, so we need guidance. And how, how do you, what's most important to use what space for what, on which corridors? And sometimes, not every corridor can accommodate every mode of travel. And so we can think about it as a, as a complete network. And so kind of the complete network approach, I'd love to kind of put, help kind of nuance that in there and then be able to kind of tie it to that decision-making guidance we're, we're putting in at the top. But yeah, this is a great draft. Thank you so much. And I'm glad we talked about road use charging.
Yeah, and I, I second everything Lauren's.
I started.
And Michaela?
I really liked the metric section. That really resonates with me. My, my only comment or my feeling was that it feels odd to be so specific here. And in no other element do we go into detail and say this element needs metrics as well. We say it at the top. And so I'm wondering if perhaps we could frame it as an example of, of the way all the chapters should, or elements should be treated, so that there's that nuance of we're not just saying metrics are important here, but they're important elsewhere as well. Or the examples could be moved to a pop-out box up at the top, where here's an overarching comment. And it could be like, figure one is an example of how this could be done for one of the elements. It's really good work. I really like it. I don't want to lose it. I just don't want to make the city think we don't need metrics for other things that are important as well.
Thank you, Michaela. I'm going to interject. This is Vanessa. Now is a real opportune time for commissioners who have dug in deep into specific elements to actually provide those examples, so that, I completely agree with you, Michaela. We can reference, you know, the, the examples that are, that appear here in the transportation section of our letter. If you all have the time and bandwidth to provide other examples of metrics that would be helpful in other sections, that would be great. If not, we can reference this as an example and encourage the city to, to have that same level of rigor across the elements.
Yeah, I agree with you, Michaela, that we could elevate this to the broader metrics section and kind of reduce, there's something about transportation-related emissions, there's something about safety, there's something about the amount and type of housing that we're seeking to provide, and there's something around anti-displacement, and then probably something around resilience, too. Just to say, like, we, we cherry picked these from all of our best plans to date, and the comprehensive plan should, should reinforce those and adopt those as accountability targets.
Deanna had a comment, wanted to offer the targets for all the other elements.
Oh, great. I can actually work with a few of you. I'm happy to work with folks on some of those. I do have some ideas of helpful references. But specifically, I think, like David said, Lauren, spot on, and I agree, happy to work with staff on some of the framing. The message, I think the information is there, and it's just the titles that could probably be tweaked to provide that nuance. And specifically, for example, parking demand management is part of transportation demand management, so to speak. So there might be just opportunities even just to switch it around to highlight both, but, you know, let the city know that we understand that both of those strategies are the same and, but, but specific to parking this, right? And then the, the, the piece around the KPIs and the metrics and all of that, I would love to include probably more at the top than here only. Of course, my brain goes to transportation, but is, allude to the fact that if the comprehensive plan doesn't prioritize measuring, right, it's not, it's not going to be funded, right? We understand planning dollars are always the scariest, and we don't support our agencies to make a case that the comprehensive plan requires them to measure and, and track performance. And the only way they can justify getting funding to study, track, create a, let's just say, you know, you know, this observatory for the city, right, like, where there could be, you know, the top 10 or 20 KPIs for the growth of the city, right, that need to be monitored, tracked, and there should be data, and someone responsible for gathering that data and reporting it out, right, is not going to exist if the comprehensive plan doesn't make it important to measure. So how to elevate within the comprehensive plan, this, this ask for, it's a little bit of the why, what, and the how around metrics in the comprehensive plan that could be helpful. Like, why? Because it creates accountability, because it creates a compass, you know? What? These metrics, you know? How? Through monitoring and tracking evaluation system, or observatory, or whatever we want to call it, right, that receive, you know, that, that allows for the city to evaluate this at this, you know, middle, beginning, middle, and end of the performance of the targets.
Andy had a comment, and seeing Andy's name makes me think, is there a spot where we talked about things that are not in the letter?
That would be at the general, at the end.
At the end, okay. Andy?
Yeah, I'm going to have to leave before the end, so I hope we get to it. I may need to cut in sooner. But just very quickly with what we just said on metrics, I think it is valuable to have an example of metrics in each section. Both, it puts us on record as saying we want them, and it gives whoever does the actual work a place to start, as they've seen an example in each section.
Thank you. Let's move on at the breakneck speed on to housing. Okay. Sorry, Justin.
No, no, Olivia's going to do housing.
So housing starts on page eight of the draft. Once again, it has some sort of high-level recommendations that are backed up by supporting data and some recommendations. Starts with the recommendation to pair strong housing policy with a growth strategy that promotes equity. Another to increase housing supply overall to improve affordability. Another recommendation to lean into a growth strategy that promotes better housing choice.
that promotes better housing choice by allowing more types of homes for more types of households everywhere. And then another to reduce barriers to building permanent supportive housing in more areas of the city. I know there's a lot of overlap here, so there may be some sort of repeated, some repeated thoughts from growth strategy. Happy to hear new thoughts that come up from people from that conversation, or if someone hasn't spoken at all yet, had a thought about growth strategy that's kind of brought up here.
Jamie, maybe you type your transportation comment in the chat. Sorry. Unless nobody has anything right now.
I'll move back to you, too.
Yeah. Did anybody have anything?
Like Andy?
Andy. Oh, there's Andy again.
Quick comment on the reducing barriers suggests that the city gets some input from the developers and builders about what they see as those barriers.
Okay.
Michaela?
They're supposed to talk to developers and interview them, and talk to a lot of folks and gather information, and then document that. I think I asked this question, Michaela, and I think that they got a lot of that information from SDCI and the Office of Housing, if I remember correctly, who have a pretty strong pulse on things. But yes, the nature of that barrier identification is that somebody has to make the decision about what barriers to even put down in writing, which ones not to include in the plan. And so I would say it's an opportunity for commissioners, if they want, to pop into the housing appendix and look at the barriers the city identified, and see if those ring true to you. And if you think there are gaps, it would be a good time to bubble those up now or next week.
Nick?
Just a question maybe related to this topic here on reduced barriers to supportive housing. Are we, are we being overly narrow? Was there anything else in the housing appendix that would suggest even emergency housing, or emergency shelter, or other kind of categories that are often difficult to cite and can sometimes have a lot of local restrictions attached to them because they have stigma attached to them? So I'm curious if that was, if we should elevate other types of housing like that? And maybe Michaela, I don't know if you have any insights reading the housing element or others?
I know that their capacity section on emergency housing is extremely short. Like, we've got sufficient in multiple ways, sufficient capacity, so we don't need to make any changes. I would have to go unmute for a minute and do a word search in the document to see about the barrier identification specifically on that. I don't remember anything, though, that was targeted and individualized to either permanent supportive housing or emergency housing types.
Okay, I'll take that as a homework assignment for myself to Olivia, and reach out if I see, maybe that should be a comment added. Thanks.
Great, thanks.
If there's nobody else right now, I just suggest that we heard some interesting statistics coming out of the housing appendix that showed the scale of the need at various income levels. I would just like to reference some of, you know, call out what some of those statistics showed and just put a minute in the comment. You're scoring our point.
Michaela was kind enough to go through at least half of the housing appendix with specific comments, that this would be good to add, this would be good to add, this would be good to add. So we'll do that.
Okay, well, thanks, Michaela. Already done that work.
And if I could just publicly compliment the staff who worked on that, it is 170 pages of analysis. That is an incredible tool for us as commissioners to evaluate the plan against the data that's in that, and the findings that are in that document. Sure, there are opportunities to improve the analysis, but it's so great. And if other folks are looking to refine their feedback related to housing at all, I encourage you to take a look. There's just so much awesome information, including a whole thing at the end around, I don't want to call it access to opportunity, but that's not the best term.
I don't see anybody else in the queue right now, so let's just jump back to Jamie and her comment for transportation.
Thanks, David. I just wanted to go back to the transportation demand management section. We've talked about this before as a commission, but I just really want to emphasize that I'm concerned about the inclusion of TMD without any sort of racial equity analysis and a plan for mitigation for low-income households, especially those that live outside of the city of Seattle that may have to commute in. Because we've already experienced a whole bunch of displacement, and many of those households in lower-wage jobs are having to move outside of the city and still commute back in. And I don't think the way we've worded is like, you know, an inclusion of this should be paired with a discussion isn't quite strong enough language to address that concern, because it really is that this can only be implemented if we have done a racial equity analysis and we're also considering some sort of mitigation for low-income households, whether they live in the city of Seattle or not. Because otherwise, we're just making a plan that is benefiting those who already live in walkable communities and can afford to live in the city, and then punishing those who've had to move out because they can't afford to stay in the city. So I guess the intersection with anti-displacement strategies here would be good to reference.
Great, thank you. I'm going to move us to the next section so that we can, these are all such great comments, and I do apologize. I feel like I'm trying to put 10-pound, 100-pound content into a 10-pound bag, just time-wise. But we will have time next week, so I want to reiterate that. I'm not going to hit all of these on climate and environment. Instead, I'll let you all read the screen and refer back to the letter. These start on page?
11.
11, thank you. They're also formatted slightly different than the other sections. So if you could hold your comments on the formatting and really focus on the content, would really appreciate your comments on the formatting, the layout next week, once we get a little bit of a better handle on the, on the content itself. As I was reviewing these, based on notes that from conversations over the last several weeks, there was a suggestion to include specific anti-displacement policy language in part two of this element. Specific suggestions from commissioners would be really helpful to include. There was also another comment around considering more specific language in the policy related to achieving racial and social equity in health outcomes. A specific suggestion of what that specific language would be would be great to be able to include in our letter. I'll also note something else we haven't done yet in the letter, but that we will do towards the end as we finalize the content, is cross-reference other policies or other recommendations that we make in the letter. So for example, stronger language was recommended in conjunction with Land Use Policy 17 to 11 to discourage additional growth in flood-prone areas as opposed to merely regulating them. This body can decide whether you want that kind of comment, both in the climate and environment element section of our letter, as well as the land use. That's, I'm fine to do that and to cross-reference, or if you only want it in one section, but reference the importance in the other element. And I'm going to open it up right now for comments.
While we're getting the queue set up, Rick had a question for Jamie about the concern around TDM.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, David. Yeah, Jamie, I know we've talked about this before. Are there, are there any policy precedents that we could refer to in the document to kind of clarify some potential ways of addressing the potential increased harm to those who have been displaced or at risk of displacement?
Not that I know of. I have not seen explicit plans in place or policies in place to address that.
Okay, thanks.
That I know of, anyway.
I have kind of the opposite of what you were requesting, Rick. It's kind of like how we only allow, or we have implemented Metro Flex on-demand access to transit only in South Seattle and South King County, because King County Metro invests where the needs are greatest. And so, you know, communities in Wallingford might be a little bit farther from a light rail station, but that's very different from Ranger Beach, for example.
Right.
So proactive policies, like creating more layers of support for people to access transportation, for example, like, that's, that's an example of a kind of TDM or a supportive mobility program that is helping people get to a transit investment that is really investing where needs are greatest. So, you know, something like that, where it's like, that's, that's a key policy decision. Needs like that exist all over where we're building light rail, but there's definite disparities, and we know of them, and we've documented them. So like, is that kind of the type of thing that you're looking for?
To some extent, yeah. Although I think it's more addressing Jamie's concern. I mean, it's my concern as well. It's this issue of how do we address the potential for harm to those who have already been harmed, or might be further harmed in the short term, while at the same time achieving our longer-term goals? And I've been at a loss as to how we propose a strategy for doing so.
Well, the road user pricing work that SDOT did back pre-pandemic really had an equity lens on it. And so that could, that could be a place where we could look, yeah, as well as prioritizing low-income communities of color to receive incentives and actively decrease barriers for those communities.
So maybe we can take a closer look at this in the Land Use Transportation meeting?
Yeah.
Andy, you had something on the current section.
Yeah, I guess two things on what's on the screen right now. One, minor on water, and the major one on earthquakes. The water one, I would suggest making it monitoring of water bodies for chemical and biologic contamination, just to kind of make it clear what you're looking for. It seems like a simple change. The big one is the earthquake one, and consistent with the public comment that you received, that I think the plan itself, you know, really minimizes what is probably one of the biggest hazard the city has. And I sent a paragraph to Vanessa and the chairists that, you know, don't need to read it or whatever, that expands on the earthquakes and why it needs its own section, and why it's so important, and the kinds of things that should be referred to. And then of all the things within earthquake response and preparedness, obviously have the various city agencies get to the details on them, but at least have in the plan, here's the range of issues that the city should be considering. And make it big enough and robust enough that, you know, when that earthquake happens, much of the rest of the plan is almost irrelevant until we have response and recovery. So that's, I put a paragraph in there that can be wordsmithed, however.
Andy, I will send out.
Or you can put the paragraph up right now if people want a quick look at it.
What I will do is I will, I will send out the paragraph. I've got some really bad.
Andy, mute yourself. Your feedback is coming through his speakers.
Yep. What I will do, incorporating, I will incorporate, we will.
You unmute every time.
Stop it, Deanna.
I will incorporate the comments that I have heard today, as well as that that has been sent to me. And I would just like to reiterate, please do not reply to all, because that constitutes a constitution of the conversation that is outside and not in compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act. An additional piece of information, I just haven't had the time, Andy, to do the full research, but Seattle's Office of Emergency Management has a number of plans, actionable plans, operational plans that are in place that talk about recovery, mitigation, and preparedness. So I will provide that, just so everybody is aware what is out there, and it's not going to be a comprehensive list, but what is out there in Seattle code plans and policies regarding earthquake response mitigation and preparation.
Yeah, the message I want is that we are pointing to those plans. Not saying the plans belong in the comp plan, but they are important, and that the comp plan points to those existing plans.
Great, thank you.
Point well taken. Julio has a comment. I guess going back to transportation, but that's fine.
I, yeah, is it my turn?
Yeah.
All right. By the way, I am glad that that sound problem got corrected, because I hate to sound like Donald Duck, which is what it sounded like. So just a quick observation on their recommendations about transportation. I wholeheartedly support the ideas that are being placed here, mochi, electrification of public vehicles, et cetera. But I hope that this doesn't open a door for the city to kind of like leave behind some of the less, some of the more economically challenged neighborhoods that might have harder time accessing electric vehicles or places where to recharge, so on and so forth. So I wonder if there is some way that we can achieve some kind of balance between the ideas that are put on the table and what I think it's still a need, which is to provide more economically challenged communities with the possibility of accessing electric vehicles, electric chargers for vehicles, et cetera. Let me know if that makes sense, or if I need to clarify anything.
Thank you, Julio.
Yeah. Jamie?
This is half comment, half question. From my read, it seems like we have a lot of references to, I know the mayor has looked at this like low pollution neighborhood. We looked at it with STP as well, as kind of like different strategies. But, I mean, through everything I saw, we still haven't seen like a clear idea or definition of where those might be. We know the priority is to lower emissions, lots of climate solutions, green infrastructure, you know, promote walking, and less vehicle miles traveled, all that. But I, I'm, I just came off this project where I was working on like cumulative air pollution. And, and I feel like there's something there around like, thinking about Lauren's comment of going where the need is greatest. Like, are we actually addressing the neighborhoods that already are bearing disproportionate pollution burden? And what are we doing to prioritize? Like, you know, there's that like, in the health world, there's like the Blue Zone initiative, right? Like, can we have a Green Zone initiative where it's like, the areas that have the highest cumulative pollution and the worst air quality, we have dedicated investments to those neighborhoods? Whereas right now, Whereas right now, I think the low pollution zones are not, we have not identified where they're going to go. And we've talked about this as a commission too of like, you know, that decision is really important because are those investments continuing to go towards those neighborhoods that already have a lot of investments because you could potentially achieve those reductions easier? Because it's already a walkable community or it's already, right? So I think something that's there around like, can there be low pollution zones? Or some other, like, maybe it's a different designation that is really targeting communities that are bearing disproportionate pollution burden. Yeah, and we referenced it in other places, right? But I feel like this is an intended, this is in some of those policy things, but we don't, all the low pollution zone things in here don't necessarily talk about who's the most impacted.
I believe we talked about it, Jamie, in the development of our draft, of our letter on the draft STP. And actually, Estat staff have looped back with us. And I'm looking at John to make sure this is correct. They are planning on coming, you know, they heard the comments around like, what are the criteria for selecting low pollution neighborhoods or areas? And they are coming back to us in.
May.
May. So I think something that I would put out as a question for this, for the commission, is what kind of language would you like to see in the comp plan that actually maybe suggests some criteria for those low pollution neighborhoods? A thought?
I'm adjusting this for my communities.
Those with disproportionate pollution burden, already higher rates of like asthma, heart disease, you have health indicators you can use.
And I can loop back with you, Jamie, and include that in the next iterative draft that goes out for commissioner consideration. I do want to move us on to the next section, just to make sure Andy has the opportunity before he has to leave, for us to talk about our public health recommendations. Our parks and open space recommendations are pretty light. In general, the commissioners who dove into this element were very appreciative of the element. And the one recommendation that came out was to consider a policy that prioritizes the retention expansion and expansion of natural features over the introduction of additional non-permeable surfaces when developing new parks and open spaces. In the public health section, some of the issues that were raised in the public health discussion were actually addressed in other sections of the comp plan. The parking maximums and, blanking on the other one that's in housing.
Arterials.
Thank you. Housing off the arterials. We do recognize that public health is not a standalone element, but rather referenced throughout the draft plan and recommend considering noise pollution in addition to other forms of pollution when considering public health impacts and incentivizing the use of health-promoting building certification standards for all buildings in the city such as fit well and well standards, in addition to green building standards. We have a little over 12 minutes to both talk about this and then get into any general lingering comments. Again, this isn't the last opportunity to talk about the plan. We will be talking about it over the next two weeks, looking to approve the letter two weeks from today. So it would be great to surface any new ideas today as well as I just encourage you all to be thinking about specific examples that we can include in this letter. Rather, in addition to the observations of this could be stronger or strengthen this language, or this is too vague. I think the commission could be a real value add in providing examples of what is stronger language, what is less vague language. So for those of you who have the time to dig into that, please email me, only me, and then I will send a draft out, a revised draft, or we all, Olivia, John, and I will send a revised draft out to everybody. So first of all, comments on parks and open space and public health.
Andy?
Mine's on the next section.
Which one? We're doing both.
Oh, you're doing both. Okay. Yeah, just good comments. I thought the minimum parking was well worded and the thing about keeping away from, housing away from arterial streets is well worded. So I was glad to see both of them are well represented. In the public health section, just kind of minor things. I'd say the noise pollution is especially in relation to housing. I mean, obviously you don't want noise anywhere, but of the places where it's probably causes the most harm is noise where, you know, people trying to sleep in housing. A little bit of noise in a commercial area is kind of more or less expected. So you might consider adding wording that it's especially for housing. But otherwise, I think the other pieces do mostly get caught in other sections.
Thank you.
Michaela?
The housing appendix documented something I was not aware of about the city's outside citywide program. They inventoried public outdoor spaces and recommended priority areas for public space improvements. And there's a figure there in the appendix. I did not read the parks and open space element. And I am just curious if staff think that the parks and open space element is responsive to the recommendations that came out of that process?
I haven't looked, I haven't looked at the outside citywide. That came before the commission a couple of years ago. I haven't looked at it since. What Caleb pointed out is that there has been a shift in the parks and open space element from trying to achieve X number of acres per population number and really focus instead on access to the parks and open spaces that we have and look for opportunities to develop new parks and open spaces where we have those opportunities, but acknowledging that there simply is not the available land to develop your traditional, the more traditional parks and open spaces in order to meet an acreage per population target.
Okay, thank you.
CDN?
Yes, just, and again, it's just unfortunate that we don't have enough bandwidth, each of us to kind of dive into all the things that we're interested in informing. Similar to Michaela in the sense that I did not have the opportunity to review the parks and open space section, but am familiar with the outside citywide version that was made public in 2016 or whenever, right before the pandemic. And that had phenomenal, I thought it was a phenomenal strategy and approach for parks and open space. So do, do you hope we could, if the folks that worked on that section have the opportunity to just reconcile and see if like, I knew, I know that there was going to be an update on the outside citywide strategy, if that is available and just kind of, you know, make sure that maybe our comp plan does reflect that analysis would be great. And in terms of the recommendation phrasing, and maybe I just want to better understand the intent of the statement, because I would consider reframing it from, again, coming at it just looking at how it's phrased. I would not necessarily agree with the statement of consider policy that prioritizes the retention expansion over. Like, I wouldn't do it on, you know, either/or statement. I would say we want to prioritize retention expansion of natural features. We also want to see more introduction of public spaces and place-making opportunities in our right-of-way everywhere. So I kind of don't want to put the city in a position where they have to do an either/or strategy. It's a both-and strategy. And specifically because our right, you know, a lot of our right-of-way paper was about precisely how can we make most streets, you know, available to social gathering and community cohesion and all these kinds of things. And most of those are hardscapes. So I just want to be mindful of how we don't contradict how we've been, what we've been saying in our right-of-way issue brief with this recommendation.
Great, thank you, Deanna. I'm going to open it back up, not that it's been open, for the next five minutes for more general comments. And then I do want to move us on to the draft, discussion of the draft EIS, the draft letter on the draft EIS. Jamie has a response.
Jamie has a response slash question.
Just to what Deanna just said, I totally hear you on not wanting to like undermine anything from the right-of-way work. I think what this was trying to address was that the city has come under fire in the past around parks that have been developed that are, have like virtually no greenery. Like, it's like plazas and especially when you factor in like, we're getting more high heat days and there have been parks where it's like more concrete than there is like trees or green space or anything like that. And so I'd love to figure out like, what's language that gets at both of those things? Because we definitely don't want to undermine the right-of-way work, but we do want to hold the city accountable to like, not all public spaces of the same quality, right? And ensuring that especially in neighborhoods that are bearing disproportionate urban heat island effect, that we're not just putting in a bunch of plazas, like, so.
I have ideas for that, so we can work on that. And mainly is, I think we then need to add a statement just to note for staff. When we make this recommendation, it has to come in hand with management and activation and management strategies for these public spaces because the challenge and the reason why they're putting more hardscapes and not enough greenery is maintenance and operations and management and keeping the weeds out and pruning and all of that. And so it's not a, the what is the maintenance cost, right? An operational cost of managing and activating these spaces. That we should just note that we understand it's a challenge and therefore requires attention.
We did talk about that too. So, yeah, in agreement.
And that, I would just add, this is Vanessa, the element does speak to, does have some subsections, one of which is specific to maintenance. So they, the authors have recognized that as an issue to be addressed at the comp plan policy guidance level.
I don't want to open up a long debate about it, but I'm just curious if we have consensus around Andy's recommendation regarding earthquake preparedness. Does anybody have heartburn with our suggesting that there be a section that pulls together what the city is doing, has done in terms of planning? Where in the plan, the elements of the plan that connect to earthquake preparedness? Just, so there's one spot in the plan that acknowledges the importance that says, this is the reference point for our approach to earthquake. Now, we're not asking for, as I understand it, a whole lot of extra work around it, except to have this important placeholder in the plan and articulation of what we're doing around earthquake preparedness, if I understand the recommendation right. I just wanted to see if we've got consensus on that.
David, if I could just interject. What I would like to suggest is that I put together not too large of another piece of work for you all to read, but to actually put together an overview of where the earthquake preparedness language currently lives in the city so that we're not asking for something that already exists. So just, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't suggest that the commission talk about something without having a keen understanding of, you know. I think it's fine for it to be a subsection in the letter or whatever you all decide. I would just like you all to be cognizant and aware of the existing policies and operational plans that the city has. We don't sadly have the time to do an analysis nor the subject matter expertise to determine if it's adequate or not. So I would just add that for your all's consideration.
We can discuss Jamie's question about where it ought to live in the plan. It's within a particular element. Okay, great. I think we can move on to DEIS. And that's Michaela, is that a reference to the, something that's not in, already in the letter or the earthquake?
I was just going to respond to Vanessa. Like, I think what she's trying to say is let's not call the city out for not having an earthquake preparedness plan. And I feel that, but I also think that what the city chooses to articulate as its policy priorities coherently in its comprehensive plan is really illustrative of what the city's prioritizing going forward into the future. And I think some of us are questioning whether the city's deeply, you know, I think we want to at a minimum see like a cogent policy section saying, this is what the city's preparing, you know, this is what's going to guide our decision-making in the future on earthquake preparedness. And so if that's pulling together, cross-referencing other policies elsewhere in the plan, that's fine. But, you know, the big one is coming at some point. And we as a city need to be prepared for it. And that means that we need to invest in things that might not happen in our lifetime, might not happen in a certain election cycle, but are important nonetheless. And when there's budget constraints, a comprehensive plan saying this is a priority could potentially be helpful for ensuring it remains funded. So, yeah, I think, I think that's what we're trying to say, yeah.
Did anyone do a word search for unreinforced mainstream? Stop it.
Somebody did.
Okay, we're going to go on to the DEIS. Two times.
Me to kick it off. Sorry, I'll just switch on my notes over here.
It's two times.
The draft environment impact statement comment letter is large, it's a staff draft, but we did incorporate some comments that came from our last full commission meeting discussion on 28. And it starts off, as a lot of our DEIS letters do, with just some introductory comments. We also include some positive feedback on the inclusion of the detailed historical context that they have here on, especially like race-based policies on redlining and other clauses related to housing. And there's also some comments on appreciating the multifaceted approach to studying displaced in the DEIS. And then it moves into areas for additional analysis, starting with some overall recommendations. And I do want to note here that I noticed, going over my notes this week, that we did mean to include an overall comment in the comment section about studying earthquake preparedness, just leading off of this whole conversation we just had. And that fell through the cracks because it wasn't in any of the elements. So John and I both kind of missed it. So sorry about that. That will be included in the overall comments, but it's not in the draft you have in front of you. But there was a comment to study earthquake preparedness in the DEIS. I'm going to include that. The other overall comment, overall recommendations relate to providing a detailed explanation for how new place types are defined and selected, speaking specifically to neighborhood centers and corridors in the DEIS. There's a comment to provide a more complete exploration of racial equity impacts throughout the DEIS. And also a comment, not so much a recommendation, just that the inclusion of the 130th, 140th street station area, a sort of like a secondary EIS process in this EIS, just adds some confusion. So we're just kind of noting that here. It's not necessarily a specific recommendation tied to that, but just calling out that it is a bit confusing to kind of blend those two EIS processes. We then move on to the specific recommendations for different sections of the DEIS. So just starting off here with air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, we have a recommendation to study the impacts of locating sensitive uses near additional high-volume traffic roadways beyond freeways. There is a study in the DEIS of us specifically related to I-5 and a little bit of I-90, but not to any other high-traffic or high-volume roads. So there's a comment on that. And then I pass it to John for his section.
Okay, the land use patterns and urban form section of the DEIS, the comments in the staff draft letter on the bottom of page.
The comments in the staff draft letter are on the bottom of page two and most of page three. And we have three comments. One, we recommend that the DEIS provides more detail and context on the negative land use impacts that are identified in the DEIS and more specifics on the consequences of those impacts. The second comment is the DEIS should really emphasize that the negative impacts identified in the land use section are resulting, the negative impacts resulting from urban growth that are identified are expected as a result of that urban growth and are only temporary. And then lastly, we recommend, we identify that there are both positive and negative equity impacts identified in the DEIS. And we're asking or recommending to highlight both the positive and the negative equity impacts in more detail.
Thanks, John. The next section is comments around the population, housing, and employment analysis in the DEIS. There's a recommendation to provide additional employment analysis related to the changing nature of work location post-pandemic. There's a recommendation to study how each alternative may support or hinder the implementation of anti-displacement policies in the draft plan beyond just mandatory housing affordability. Another recommendation to study the impact of each alternative on housing affordability and supply more deeply. And a recommendation to include a discussion of how each alternative impacts housing choice in areas of high opportunity. And I should have said, sorry, we're doing this in a little different line than we just did the last section. We're going to run through each of these, give you a five-minute review, and then just open it up to broad discussion, just due to the time constraints for this section. So pass it back to John.
Okay. And then on transportation, there are four bulleted comments, starting on page five. The first one is that the transportation impact analysis is overly technical for the public and a concern that the methodology is very technical and difficult to understand. The second is we would like the DEIS to better describe the relationship between the transportation analysis that was conducted for the EIS and that that was done for the Seattle Transportation Plan. The, the DIS, the third one is that the DIS includes a range of proposed mitigation measures and that the Planning Commission feels that those mitigation measures should not necessarily just be called out as mitigation, but they should be inherent to development of a good citywide transportation system. And then lastly, the, as I mentioned at the last discussion on this, the only significant unavoidable adverse impact called out in the transportation section is on transit capacity. And so we're recommending providing more information on that and also stating that that adverse impact could be an opportunity to work with regional partners to expand transit capacity.
Thanks, John. So that's all the sections in the DEIS. We're going to give another five-minute individual review time, so you can look over the letter. And then we'll just jump into, we'll open it up to everyone for comments on all the sections. John, did you send both letters out when you sent it?
I did. Yep.
So you should have it in your inbox. Looks like it is 4:58, so we will come back together around 5:03. All right, that was about five minutes. So if the folks had time to look through, if you hadn't already. And like I said, we're just going to open it up broadly to comments on any category this time, so you can go ahead and put your name in queue. And I think Deanna's questions have been related to the DEIS.
Yes.
And I would say we did get a response about the population estimates. I'm looking at Vanessa just to confirm that I'm not making this up in my head. But I believe we were told, and I think this is also in the Housing Appendix, but it's a general number, it's not super specific, but they are predicting that the population may be 1 million. So it's, yeah.
Okay.
1 million by 2044.
Okay, Michaela, get us rolling.
Sorry, can I, I had a comment first, just in terms of the first statement for our feedback on transportation impact analysis being overly technical. Is it okay if I just mention it real quick?
Sure.
What my preference would be is that we don't, I don't think that the issue is that it's an overly technical document. DEIS should be overly technical. And I actually feel that comparatively speaking to other DEIs for, you know, policies and transportation plans, it's actually pretty comprehensive, so I celebrate that myself. What I think was missing is that the language and the communication of it is what we're perhaps asking to be improved, for it to be more easily digestible in terms of the implications or impacts understood by the general public. So, you know, it can say, you know, any kind of technical approach and documentation. I celebrate that it's there. And then it should say something like, and what this means is, right? And like translate it for general consumption and understandability. So that would just be my suggestion that, at least the way I feel is, I celebrate that it was very technical and nuanced. What is missing is it being a little bit easier to understand in terms of the implications. But I appreciate very much the key points that we're making in the letter with regards to, is there consistency with the STP? How were those two analyses correlated? Are the assumptions the same? Because if they're not, then I am concerned that what our STP is saying and what, you know, comp plans, impacts assessments are saying aren't in alignment. And we are environmentally clearing something that then our plan is not going to be representative of. So I want to celebrate making that point.
Deanna, do you think you could offer an example of something that's expressed in an overly technical way? And how it could be rendered in lay language?
Absolutely. I can do that in comments to not take time now.
Yeah, yeah, in our future discussion of the letter. Lauren, sorry, Michaela deferred to you, so you get to go now.
I was just going to write down my thoughts, Michaela, so please go.
She's not ready yet, Michaela. You're always ready.
I'm never at a loss for words. Jamie was commenting in the other letter about kind of like language that felt kind of non-committal around displacement of like, talk to the communities impacted by displacement some more, and we look forward to hearing what you learn from them. And it was coming back to me, I think, where that, I think I may have been the generator of that comment because they had proposed this middle housing strategy that would only, that would reduce the number of units allowed in areas at high risk of displacement to three units, as opposed to the four elsewhere in the city. And I think I was just interested more in the analysis and the thought behind that of whether or not that would accelerate displacement in the long run by limiting supply in those communities or not. So just wanted to say I appreciate that you pulled that out as an example in one of the comments of just studying that in more detail. And I just think that the, I did not dive into the DEIS. And I find that the comment letter is well-written and easy to absorb. And everything is kind of brief and tight. And just I think staff did a good job generally in pulling together comments. And you had like hundreds of pages to read, so good job, you guys. And thank you so much.
Yeah, second, Michaela's kudos. Thank you so much. And it just strikes me, this following on the conversation that we just had about the draft comp plan, how potentially our discussion on the comp plan and how the comp plan could be different if we had the information that is being requested in this DEIS letter. For example, on page four, studying the impact of each alternative on housing affordability and supply, it would be great to know how the different alternatives studied in the DEIS would be serving different AMI levels by types of housing under each alternative. And to me, that links to the comp plan. This is going to be more of just a comment as opposed to enrich our discussion as opposed to a directed comment on the letter. Because I think it really points us to the types of things that we are seeking from the comprehensive plan. Another example, how do these alternatives impact housing choice in areas of high access to opportunity? What if we saw an analysis of what it looked like to put a thousand-foot buffer along our busiest arteries? And we're thoughtful about placing housing, particularly rental housing, along those corridors? So I really appreciate the way that the DEIS is worded to seek technical analysis in line with our values and our goals that we're seeking in the comprehensive plan. And so kind of just to link back to this comp plan discussion and envisioning kind of the theme of our discussion, kind of what I'm taking away from our discussion today is that, you know, we, there's a, we're at the point kind of in our journey, I would say, journey of growth as planners and as a city, where we're talking about the right things. We're talking about anti-displacement, we're talking about equity, we're talking about 15-minute communities. But the policies and the data analysis to really help us make those hard decisions and kind of put those lines on the maps, if you will, feel absent from the planning documents now. And what I really appreciate about this letter is that it is seeking the technical analysis that potentially could have allowed us to create a draft plan that would be more effective in advancing our goals and where we could see that future vision and where we could really see an actionable pathway to the most effective kind of moves, both from our growth strategy, housing and transportation investments, that could make the biggest difference in line with our goals. And so, you know, I'm not sure, you know, obviously we're at the place in the process where we are now. But that's just kind of my main reflection on this DEIS letter. If we had this data, what could that mean? And I don't know that this letter is going to get us that data. Another thing that kind of is related to the transportation element as well as the land use impacts, you know, impacts like increased frequency of areas with a mix of uses and heights, different land use types being located close together, more people living in areas of the city that don't have connected transportation, don't have connected sidewalk networks, more people facing the effects of vehicle emissions. These are the realities of growth in Seattle. These are the realities of frankly, what we're seeking, more mixing of uses, but that that's framed as a negative impact in the DEIS is interesting to me and I think speaks to the data that's here, not to negate all of this technical work that's been done. But I think that this letter really requests technical analysis more in line with the hard policy decisions we're trying to make around increasing housing choices in more areas of the city, especially in places with high access to opportunity. So I really appreciate this letter and I hope for this type of technical analysis that really advances our goals to continue to supplement this planning effort.
Nobody else in the queue right now, so I'll go. I guess the thing that leaps out to me is that we have a preferred alternative that's a hybrid of the alternatives that were studied and that doesn't necessarily go the full distance with any of the alternatives. The neighborhood centers are scaled way back, the corridors are able to find if they're out there and find it all. It's just the preferred alternative, if we're going to ask them to study or add more information, I wondered about the preferred alternative, not the previously studied alternatives. Like what, and I don't think it's too much to ask for us to actually have the information on the preferred alternative. have the information on the preferred alternative. So we know the answers to questions about how it addresses affordability, how it addresses transportation access, how it addresses, you know, access to air-pollinated space and clean air, et cetera, et cetera.
I agree with you, David. One of the examples, it's kind of right in the middle of page four. Where, you know, we're seeking study of how each growth, how each alternative growth strategy could hinder, support or hinder the implementation of anti-displacement policies. For example, the EIS could provide an analysis of displacement strategies explored in the draft plan, which include allowing only three units in neighborhood residential zones. I think one of the main comments we have on the comp plan is that it doesn't grow the pie. It divvies the pie even more. And I want to see analysis in this, in the DEIS of what does that mean for us? What does that mean and how, how far short we are going to fall of the, of the growth targets and of the needs we're trying to meet of, you know, the future of Seattle. So I think that this points us there. But I, I second you, David, thinking about, okay, we see what's represented in the draft comp plan now. And I understand that, you know, an entire EIS isn't going to be redone, but these two letters, I appreciate the opportunity to review these two letters together because one should be the basis for the other. And we don't have a lot of the information we need to develop strategies that are really going to move the needle.
Okay, let's see. Anybody else got a comment? Anyone to make out loud?
I'll just mention part of the technical piece. I love the technical, but the methods and assumptions weren't necessarily always adequately documented. And I just find it fascinating that there's across the board many references to per capita indicators in the analysis. And I don't even know if everyone used this, you know, if all, everyone contributing to the DEIS analysis used the same population number to understand if we're taking the same population as the per capita denominator. So curious, because it appears that it was derived through households and then maybe like household size. And maybe that's how they came up with population for some indicators, which is fine. We just need to understand the sourcing of those numbers to make sure that it's apples to apples.
See, you haven't said anything today. Caleb, you still there? Monica still there? Get your licks in while you still.
Yes. Yes, here, just listening.
She said something. Huh? She said something. Just there. She said yes. Thanks for saying something, Monica. I appreciate it.
Rose?
Rose. Rose always has something to say.
I actually don't this time, but I'd made a mental note to spend some time thinking of specific examples for recommendations for next week. So regarding our discussion about potential targets. Key metrics, there we go.
Thank you, Rose.
Thanks, Rose. Maybe I was just playing. I was trying to pick you on the spot. Anybody else?
If I could just interject, this is Vanessa again, and I'm sounding like a broken record, but it's really helpful for staff to have specific recommendations from you all that we can then vet with the full commission. I feel uncomfortable trying to draw conclusions because I feel like the recommendations really need to come from this company. So the more specificity in your recommendations that you have time and bandwidth to provide, I think the stronger the letter will be. And we will do our best to incorporate everything, get rid of the redundancy and really tighten up the letter so it's concise and poignant.
So is that a plug to send them to you?
Yes, send them to me. And I will distribute them to the the lean green team for us to get back out to you. I was asking what the deadline is for that. So backing, so Olivia asked about the deadline. So as a reminder to everybody, we approve, which we intend to approve, the letters two weeks from today. It has been our practice that we post our final draft to our website two days in advance. So that would be Tuesday, the 23rd. We have two committee meetings next week that we're hoping to fine-tune the, the draft. I don't want to have too many versions of the draft flying around because I think that gets really confusing for people. Are they commenting on the, and I'm hedging a little bit on the deadline. So I would say the sooner, the sooner you get, you all get recommendations to us, the sooner we can include them in drafts that we discuss at committee next week. When we do, when you all approve the letter on the 25th, there will not really be the opportunity for introducing a new idea and/or offering comments like, I think this section needs to be strengthened, or I think this section could be re-prioritized, or we need data points on this. Because on the 25th, the letter that is approved by you all, you all have to know the exact language of it. So if there are text changes that you, any commissioners want to propose, they need, you all need to say, I propose on page four, under second paragraph, rewording the sentence so it says blah, 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 blah. So that when you all take an action to approve the letter, you're understanding what you're approving. You're not leaving it up to staff to interpret what you all said.
So when we, when we come to the executive committee meeting on Tuesday, what, what should we expect?
You can expect a draft based on what, based on the content we heard today on Monday. We will not have the opportunity to do a cleanup of consistency of tone and typos and language. But if you find typos and whatnot, please let me know. And then we'll further refine that on Thursday at Land Use and Transportation. But we, we want to get a final, final, final draft out to you all on Monday. The 22nd, and then post it to the web on the 23rd. Good.
So at this point, refrain from wordsmithing and just keep focused on adding content? What do you, if I were to do some work over the weekend, what should I be doing?
My suggestion or my request would be to focus on the content. Is the content, to first focus on the content, is the needed content that you want in the letter, in the letter? And then if you have additional free time on your hands, I'm quite, you know, completely open for wordsmithing. But I think if we wordsmith before we know what we're, what the content is, that we're spinning our wheels a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Although, if you have, if you, if you, if you see something phrased and you're like, yes, this is the right content, but I don't understand it, or I don't, I think it could be better said, please pass that along. But I would ask that you prioritize the content in the letters to make sure what you want in the letters is in the letters. And then the next step is making sure it's said the right way. Or the way that expresses your opinions.
So both, both Zach and LUT next week are going to focus on workshop these letters together?
Yes.
And both of them?
Yeah.
And so if you can't attend those meetings, get your comments in by Tuesday, before Tuesday, so the rest of us can dig in on it.
Definitely before Tuesday, because the Tuesday committee meeting is an early morning meeting.
Were you talking to Mickey D? I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I was just saying, maybe we should get our comments into staff first, so they have them in their inbox first thing Monday morning. And they have a whole day with all of our input to turn something around.
Thank you. That would have, that would be really helpful. We do have six minutes left. Which isn't really time to stay in the brush. No additional public comment. Let me just fill out chat. You could ask for parting thoughts.
Oh, sorry. Did you want to introduce Matt's comments?
I think I've just did it. So Matt, Matt is on spring break.
Yay.
And he sent me some suggestions. And in the frenzy of trying to march you all through a ridiculous 70 minutes of talking about this 13-page letter, I did not, I did not include them. I will include them in the next draft that goes out. And they are, reward extra units. So in, in the urban neighborhood section, which would fall under the urban, sorry, the growth strategy. The update should either allow for more bulk as you add units as an incentive, like the state model code, or use a more basic unlimited density within the buildable area like Spokane's successful building opportunity for housing program. And then for the draft DEIS, don't count ADUs, accessory dwelling units, when counting density. Over the last several years, ADUs have taken off in part because they have very low barriers to permit and flexibility that fit many residential sites. The update counts them against the four or six unit minimum, closing the code exceptions that make them so popular. Very few people are going to carve out a mother-in-law apartment if they have to pay MHA fees to do so. ADUs have been a popular new component of the housing market with nearly 1,000 built last year, and they are low-impact infill development. There is no reason, no reason to kneecap this housing type. So I will include that in the next versions that come out to you all. And I should just clarify for anyone listening in, and I did switch to the public comment screen, but that was not public comment. That was from a commissioner who's not present today. I don't want to inconvenience anyone.
Any other closing thoughts? Leo, how's the weather where you are? Let's make us.
The weather is fine. I'm just going to offer a unscripted final comment today. As I'm coming to the end of my second term, I keep remembering past meetings and I hear a familiar refrain that comes back through the years. And it usually goes, it's never enough, it's never clear, specific enough. It never gets down to the bottom of the issues, to the real meat of the issues. And the refrain continues. Yet, here we are, giving the good, putting the good fight, giving the best effort. And in the meantime, here is a little bit of trivia for us to think about inequality. In the meantime, I just learned that the most basic birkin bag, it starts at $11,000. So here we are. The most basic what? Fairness and equity and housing that it's never enough for people that are never able to afford it. And in the meantime, there are people lining up to get a bag that starts at $11,000. So that's my closing thought for today.
I just want to thank staff again. I think the, this is an incredible amount of work. Not only reading and digesting all of the documents, but also incorporating all of our are very considered and very scintillating and interesting thoughts, but sometimes disparate and difficult to distill. And you've done an amazing job of it. I saw reflected in the letters, particularly the comp plan letter, what we had talked about in meetings and the wonderful job. And I really appreciate the staff.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Especially for running the workshop process too. I think that that worked really well in a tight timeframe. You know, when we like coalesced around the elements and we presented together, it was one of the more efficient draft comp plan review processes that I've been a part of. So thank you for the process improvement and creativity.
Thanks to all my fellow commissioners. You've all, you've all shown up. You've all had wonderful thoughts and offered them and bore down like you needed to, to get through this, through this. So we're, we're on our way. Got work to do to get to the, to cross the finish line, but we're, we're well away, on our way.
Well, thank you for your kind comments. And yes, I want to reiterate, thanks to all commissioners. This is a heavy lift. And we want to do what we can as staff to support you and adequately and properly reflect all of your wonderful comments, recommendations, and ideas.
And if there's nothing more, we are adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.